September 8, 2020. Meeting in King George County Planning Commission is now called to order. And for the record, we do have a quorum. I would like, if you could please, to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Patterson, would you lead us in an invocation?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this wonderful day. Thank you for this beautiful weather. Thank you for keeping us safe, guiding us, helping us make good decisions with respect for the county tonight, look after us. Thank you for our fire and rescue and our police force who protect us and keep us safe. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. And just for the record, we've got some electronic documentation that we have to read rather with the, because of the pandemic. So hereby call this meeting the King George County Planning Commission to order. Hereby invoke the rules and procedures previously adopted by this commission and the Board of Supervisors allowing for electronic participation by some members with a quorum physically present. This action is taken as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the governor's orders regarding limitations on gatherings and staying in place during disaster. Electronic participation is encouraged and pursuant to the governor's emergency. Orders, masks, and social distancing will be required for those physically present. If you choose to be physically present, you will be screened by authorized staff for signs of any symptoms or illness. Based on the results of that screening and/or number of members and staff, certain physical attendees may be denied entry. The following members are physically present, and I'm just going to say everyone with the exception of Mr. DeVries and Mr. Caldwell, and I believe Mr. Caldwell is en route, correct, Ms. Hall?
He is absent tonight. Yes, sir.
Okay. And I don't believe we have anybody participating through electronic means?
Not on the Planning Commission.
Correct. All right. I direct the clerk to include this statement in the statement of remotely participating board members. Sorry, we don't need that one. And just for the record, please note that there is a change to tonight's agenda. The public hearing for the rezoning application case number 19-03-Z02, request by Darrell Hertenstein, also known as King George Villages, has been withdrawn from tonight's agenda. This request was made by the applicant. Any future public hearings will be re-advertised and adjoining property owners will be notified. So, all right. And at this point, we will go to the public comment portion of the evening. Planning Commission is open for public comment. If anybody in the public wishes to address Planning Commission, please come forward, state your name. Please limit your comments to three minutes to afford everybody an opportunity to speak. And just for the record, this is a public comment for anything other than the other public hearings that are on the agenda this evening. So if anybody in the public would like to come forward to speak, please do so now. And it doesn't appear as though we have anybody, so we will move on to approval. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. Is anybody online? Chris, do we have anyone that may be interested in public comment period online? Thank you, sir. All right. So now we will move to approval of the minutes from the 11 August 2020 King George County Planning Commission meeting, after which we will move to the 19 August joint meeting. But first, we've got the 11 August meeting, and I will just ask if there are any concerns on any particular page or any particular section that any members may have, questions, concerns, comments, or corrections that they might want to address. If there are no comments or concerns, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the 11 August 2020 Planning Commission meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Did anybody abstain? Any abstentions? I don't see any. Okay. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. DeCory, you weren't at that meeting, correct? The 11 August one?
Eleven.
So you would just, yeah, 11 August. So you would just count you as an abstention. Yes, but not, I don't believe you were present at that one, so yeah, that's fine. So we'll just, we have to count you as a, to abstain from that vote since you weren't Again, if there are no additional comments, we'll ask for a motion to approve the meeting here. Okay. So, thank you. minutes from the 19 August 2020 joint meeting. And then moving on to the joint meeting that was held on the 19th of August.
I'll move.
Motion's been made. And we'll ask again if there are any questions, concerns, comments, or corrections on any
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Motion passes. of the areas or pages that were contained therein. Thank you. All right. Now, on to the Community Planning Liaison Officer, Naval Support Activity, South Potomac. I believe Ms. Kenson is online. Mr. Dines, is that correct?
Hi, this is Gail Kenson.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello, Ms. Kenson?
Yes, this is Gail Kenson.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Could you repeat your name? Okay, yeah. Ms. Kenson, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Oh, thank you very much. I am Gail Kenson. I am the Regional Community Planning Liaison Officer for Naval District Washington and provide support to Naval Support Activity, South Potomac. And I am sure you all have heard the news. We have a new commanding officer, Captain Todd Copeland, for NSA South Potomac. And I look forward to working with Ms. Hall and the planning staff until such time as we have the staff number on board. Happy to answer any questions you may have, but that is a very short update for me today. Thank you.
Well, welcome back. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. I don't think there's any questions at the time, but we really appreciate you dialing in and thank you for your support.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Take care. Moving on to plan review for Hopyard Section 12, the final plat, and we'll turn it over to Ms. Hall.
Give Chris a minute to bring up our presentation here. Tonight, we have Hopyard Farm, Section 12, final plat, tax map 23, Section 3, Parcel A 4. Zoning is multifamily R3. Next slide. This is the online GIS map that shows existing sections. Next slide. This is the overall layout of Section 12 with the typical lot detail. Next slide. Each lot exceeds the 6,500 square foot requirement in Section 12. These lots are along Wise Lane. Next slide. The lots continue down Wise Lane and intersect with Old Wharf Road. This road leads into the boat ramp. Next slide. These lots are along Pronghorn Lane, ending in a temporary turnaround easement. Next slide. The zoning is R3 multifamily dwelling district, proposed to be developed in accordance with residential cluster provisions of Article 11 of the zoning ordinance. Fifty-one proposed single-family dwelling lots are proposed in Section 12. The subdivision will create 51 new lots that contains 22.6339 acres. The plat will dedicate 1.9901 acres of right-of-way. The plat also proposes common space parcels such as LL, MM, and NN to total 10.9958 acres. The minimum area requirements for cluster provision in R3 is 6,500 square feet with a minimum lot width of 60 feet and a minimum open space requirement of 45%. This project is compliant. Open space by proffer is 602.65 acres of open space, which exceeds the 45% requirement. Section 12 proposes 10.9958 acres of open space. 472.63 acres dedicated per plat to date. This is not including Section 16, which was previously approved, for a total of 484.83 acres. Per the preliminary plat, proposed open space is 652 acres. Next slide. The proposed improvements include the erosion and sediment control and stormwater management being compliant. Construction of the roads will be from Port Conway Road, and all interior roads will become VDOT roads. VDOT has reviewed and approved this plat. Utilities will be served by public water and sewer, and this plat has been approved by service authority and the county engineer. The wetlands have been delineated, and there will be no disturbance of wetlands in Section 12. Next slide. The final plat meets all administrative requirements. The final plat is in general conformance with the preliminary plan. VDOT has approved the final plat, and service authority has approved the final plat. Next slide. The Department of Community Development recommends that King George County Planning Commission approve the plat of subdivision for Hopyard Farm, Section 12, located on 22.6339 acre portion of tax map 23, Section 3, Parcel A 4.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any questions or topics of discussion surrounding this particular effort? We don't have Ross here. All right. If there's no discussion, we'll move on to the next order of business. We do have a public hearing. We've got two public hearings still on the agenda for this evening. King George County Planning Commission will now hold a public hearing, which has been properly advertised, to receive public input regarding case number 20-08-Z02, amendment renaming and recodification of Chapter 16 Wetlands and zoning ordinance of the King George County Code to comply with the Code of Virginia, to move the wetland zoning ordinance to the zoning ordinance amendment to add Article 15 to the zoning ordinance. We'll first hear from Mr. Pancotti.
Give Chris just a minute to bring up the presentation.
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. I am Louis Pancotti, planner, and I'll be presenting case number 20-08-Z02, amendment renaming and recodification of Chapter 16 Wetlands and zoning ordinance of the King George County Code to comply with the Code of Virginia and to move the wetland zoning ordinance to the zoning ordinance, amendment to add Article 15 to the zoning ordinance. Next slide, please. Currently, the wetland zoning ordinance is located in Chapter 16 of the county code. This ordinance regulates the use and development of the wetlands. It also outlines the process for development within the wetlands. Next slide, please. Senate Bill 776 passed during the 2020 legislative session and amended Sections 28.2-104.1, 1301, 1302, and 1308 of the Code of Virginia relating to wetlands protection and living shorelines. The provisions of this bill became effective July 1, 2020. This amendment will bring the wetland zoning ordinance into conformance with these changes. The amendment will also move the wetland zoning ordinance to the zoning ordinance from the county code. It will now be Article 15 of the zoning ordinance. Next slide. Finally, Department of Community Development staff recommends that the King George County Planning Commission forward case number 20-08-Z02, amendment renaming and recodification of Chapter 16 Wetlands and zoning ordinance from the county code to comply with the Code of Virginia and to move the wetland zoning ordinance to the zoning ordinance amendment to add Article 15 to the zoning ordinance. We'll first hear from Mr. Pancotti.
Give Chris just a minute to bring up the presentation.
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. I am Louis Pancotti, planner, and I'll be presenting case number 20-08-Z02, amendment renaming and recodification of Chapter 16 Wetlands and zoning ordinance of the King George County Code to comply with the Code of Virginia and to move the wetland zoning ordinance to the zoning ordinance, amendment to add Article 15 to the zoning ordinance. Next slide, please. Currently, the wetland zoning ordinance is located in Chapter 16 of the county code. This ordinance regulates the use and development of the wetlands. It also outlines the process for development within the wetlands. Next slide, please. Senate Bill 776 passed during the 2020 legislative session and amended Sections 28.2-104.1, 1301, 1302, and 1308 of the Code of Virginia relating to wetlands protection and living shorelines. The provisions of this bill became effective July 1, 2020. This amendment will bring the wetland zoning ordinance into conformance with these changes. The amendment will also move the wetland zoning ordinance to the zoning ordinance from the county code. It will now be Article 15 of the zoning ordinance. Next slide. Finally, Department of Community Development staff recommends that the King George County Planning Commission forward case number 20-08-Z02, amendment renaming and recodification of Chapter 16 Wetlands and zoning ordinance from the county code to comply with the Code of Virginia and to move the wetland zoning ordinance to the zoning ordinance, amendment to add Article 15 to the zoning ordinance to the Board of Supervisors with recommendation for approval.
All right. Thank you, Louis. As there's no applicant to speak to this one, we will now open a public comment period for this public hearing. As before, if the public wishes to address the commission, please come forward and state your name. Limit comments to three minutes to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. And this time, if anyone has anything that they'd like to add about this particular topic, please come forward. And I think we're clear on this one as well. Mr. Dines, do you have anybody online that would like to speak to this particular topic, sir? Okay. If there's no public comment, we'll close the floor and seek input from the planning commissioners. Does anyone have any comments on this? So this is basically just bringing everything back into, we're just, we're just bringing everything into compliance.
Yes, this is just copied straight from the county code. The only thing we did was add those titles to make it look like part of our zoning ordinance.
Excellent. Ms. Myers, did you have any?
No, that's what I was going to say. It looks like it's just changing it from the code to the zoning ordinance. Pretty straightforward to me.
All right. Any last nickels?
I think it's pretty straightforward. It just, you know, simplifies and aligns things administrative in nature.
All right. If there is no further discussion, then we will ask for the motion to forward, approve and forward this on to the Board of Supervisor.
I make a motion that we forward case number 20-08-Z02, amending renaming and recodification of Chapter 16 Wetlands and zoning ordinance of King George County Code to comply with the Code of Virginia and to move the wetland zoning ordinance to the zoning ordinance, amendment to attach Article 15 to the zoning ordinance to the Board of Supervisors with recommendation for approval.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. On to our final public hearing tonight. Case number 20-08-Z03, zoning ordinance text amendment to Article 1.7.1.A and Article 3.5.3.5, King George County zoning ordinance, payment of delinquent taxes to King George County Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for approval. At this point, we will turn it over to staff to discuss. Ms. Hall, would you like to speak to this one?
Thank you. I did not prepare a presentation for this tonight. It is straight out of the Code of Virginia and very straightforward. At the August 4, 2020, King George County Board of Supervisors meeting, the supervisors are briefed by the county attorney, Matt Britton, on the Code of Virginia 15.2-2286B. At this meeting, the Board of Supervisors had consensus to send the proposed amendment to the Planning Commission for a public hearing and recommendation. This text amendment to Section 1.7.1.A and 5.3.5 of King George County zoning ordinance will allow community development staff to require proof of delinquent taxes being paid prior to an issuance of a permit for any project, whether it be for home improvement, rezoning, or a special exception request. Amendment to add 1.7.1.A states, prior to the initiation of an application by the owner of the subject property, the owner's agent, or any entity in which the owner holds an ownership interest greater than 50% for a special exception, special use permit, variance, rezoning, or other land disturbance permit, including building permits and erosion and sediment control permits, or the issuance of final approval, the authorizing body may require the applicant to produce satisfactory evidence that any delinquent real estate taxes, nuisance charges, stormwater management utility fees, and any other charges that constitute a lien on the subject property that are owed to the county and have been properly assessed against the subject property have been paid unless otherwise authorized by the treasurer. Upon receipt of an application, together with supplementary materials and payment of the application fee, the provision of proof that all outstanding payments set forth in this section have been paid and satisfied, the zoning administrator may waive this requirement for reasons of health, safety, and public welfare, provided that the applicant or owner has entered into a plan with the county treasurer to pay all delinquent taxes, fees, and charges as set forth in this ordinance. Article 5 of the zoning ordinance sets the requirements for rezoning and special exception requests. To be completely transparent, an amendment to 5.3.5E reiterates the requirement that all delinquent taxes must be paid and satisfied prior to the applicant, application. 5.3.5, application, the application for amendment to the zoning ordinance shall be filed with the zoning administrator. If the application proposes a change in a zoning classification or map boundaries, there shall be attached to the application a map showing the property drawn to scale with a reference to the existing map features to enable the property to be located on the zoning district map, a description of the property, names and addresses of the budding property owners. If the application proposes a change to the zoning ordinance text, there shall be attached to the application a written description of the nature and extent of the amendment desired, together with an explanation of reasons for seeking a change. The amendment is to add 5.3.5E, which will state, prior to the initiation of application by the owner, the subject properties, the owner's agent, or any entity in which the owner holds an ownership interest greater than 50% for a special exception, special use permit, variance, rezoning, or other land disturbance permit, including building permits and erosion and sediment control permits, or prior to the issuance of a final approval, the applicant shall produce satisfactory evidence that any delinquent real estate taxes, nuisance charges, stormwater management utility fees, and any other charges that constitute a lien on the subject property that are owed to the county and its subdivisions have been properly assessed against the subject property and have been paid unless otherwise authorized by the treasurer. Upon receipt of an application, together with the supplementary materials and payment of the application fee, and provision of proof that the outstanding payment set forth in Section E above have been paid and satisfied, the zoning administrator shall place the proposed amendment on the agenda of a regular or special meeting of the Planning Commission. The county attorney and I utilized the exact language from the Code of Virginia 15.2-2286B to draft the proposed changes. The delinquent taxes are only for real estate taxes for the property requesting the permit, rezoning, special exception, et cetera. We felt that this was straightforward and amendment, and therefore, we advertise the public hearing for tonight. The Department of Community Development staff recommends the Planning Commission forward case number 20-08-Z03, zoning ordinance text amendment, payment of delinquent taxes to the King George County Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
You're welcome.
Again, as before, no applicants. So we'll now open the public comment period. As before, again, please approach, state your name. Limit your comments to three minutes. And so we'll open that now and seeing, I don't really see anybody in the audience interested. Mr. Dines, do we have anybody online that's interested in speaking to this topic? All righty. At that point, seeing there's no speakers, we will now close the public comment period and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion.
So I just got a quick question. I understand this is just bringing us into compliance with the code, but just out of curiosity, why is the ownership interest limited to 50% or greater? Do you know what the rationale for that was?
Other than that, it came straight out of the county code. That is the only rationale I have for that.
That's good enough for me. Thank you.
That was, that was kind of my question. It kind of lets out a person who's on a triple net lease to where they could change something without.
I was trying to imagine where this would apply, but I was thinking that if there were multiple parcels with multiple owners, you know, you'd get, who would you get? You know, because none of them own 50% of the property.
Like an estate.
Yeah. I hate to say, but I think it's your headache to figure out.
And I was going to ask that too, Heather. Is this, yeah, is this something that you guys are going to have to police? So they fill out this, I guess this is another section or a piece of paper they'll sign?
This form has done is allows us a checkpoint. So when they come in as part of their application for any kind of permit, this will be another form that they will have to fill out and have checked that they are up to date on their real estate taxes.
So then the treasurer brings it back to you, and then you guys can, is there like a 24-hour, 40? I mean, is this, does this take?
It doesn't. I spoke to the treasurer, Randy Jones, and he assured me that it was no, wasn't a heavy load on his staff, that it would be a quick turnaround, that it was no issue on his end.
So then it's not really an administrative burden on your office?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Would it be worth considering making that, removing that percentage and just say any, any level of ownership or any?
Well, you have to remember, in the state of Virginia, you can only do what they allow you to do. So being that the state of Virginia said that 50%, you can't be more stringent than they are.
Okay. So you don't think that we could go any, because I'm not really interested in doing any rezoning that is back taxes, period. Doesn't matter. But I'm good with it the way it is. If you want to take it back to Matt and make sure that we can't, I'm okay with that also.
So I have a couple of questions, and I'm a little confused. So if they come for any type of application to the department, but this new text landed in 5.3, procedures for amending the zoning ordinance, then 5.3.5, application for amending the zoning ordinance, but if they're asking for a special exception permit, that's not amending the ordinance, right?
Right. So 5.3 is where the requirements for rezoning, special exception, those are your minimum requirements that you have to turn in. And that's why that is, again, restated in that section.
It's just general application requirements, not specifically applications to the amendment of the zoning ordinance?
So 5.3 is specific to rezoning and special exceptions. 1.7 is any application. So because we spell out what is required for application under rezoning, special exception, we wanted it to be clear that that was also a requirement.
Okay. Yeah, I understand now. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One question on your form, Heather. It says, I certify that payment of three of the state taxes that you paid is necessary to reference, uses these, on whatever other needs.
Being that the actual 1.7.1A is referenced above there, but we can certainly reiterate in the certification to make it abundantly clear. Have been paid in full as referenced in 1.7.1, as referenced, as referenced.
Excellent.
So this is also just a internal form, so we can change this at any time that it may not be specifically. may not be specifically clear, but I can certainly take that and make those changes.
It also says at the bottom, they've entered into a plan.
So one of the questions that I had as a zoning administrator is what happens when you have a fire or a tree fall through a house? You want those people to get their homes back, to not put added burden or hardship on them. So that is when Matt and I worked on that extra language that said, "At minimum for cases of public health, safety, and welfare, they need to at least be entered into a payment plan with the treasurer's office."
And going back to Ms. Patterson's point, you don't think there'd be, you don't think there'd be like an administrative burden on this? It would even just?
No, like I said, it's, the treasurer's office is right down the hall. It's just a matter of another checks and balance of our department.
Yeah. Okay, cool. Is there any other discussion on this topic? If not, I will ask for a motion to forward this along to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that case number 2008Z03, zoning ordinance text amendment to Article 171A and Article 353 of the King George County zoning ordinance, payment of delinquent taxes to the, to the King George Board of Supervisors, that we forward it with a recommendation for approval to the King George County Board of Supervisors.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Mr. Kendrick.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, thank you all. All right, on to our next topic, which is old business, of which I do not believe we have any.
I did have a question.
Yes, sir.
What happened with the Sedgwick thing? The zoning?
They're still waiting on the road, right?
So Sedgwick had their appeal, I believe, early August with the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors unanimously denied their appeal. At this time, we are awaiting the appeals process of that decision. The board also decided at that meeting that they wanted to inquire what it would cost the county if they wanted to take that burden on as tax, county money, and then go after the applicant for that money. So our engineering department is working with VDOT, as well as our procurement department, to put those roads out for bids. Once that is done, they'll make a decision, once they get a dollar amount of what that would cost.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hmm. That is. Alrighty, on to new business. And Ms. Hall, you've got the FY21 CIP.
Yes, the CIP is a little late this year due to COVID, but we do have fiscal year's 2021 to 2025 capital improvement plan request. The recommendation tonight is to schedule a public hearing on the capital improvement program for October 13th, 2020. At that time, we would invite all of the department heads who have a request on the CIP to come and discuss their requests with the Planning Commission. After that meeting, the individual Planning Commission members will score those projects individually, send them in to staff, and I will present an average at your November meeting. At that November meeting, you will decide your final numbers and recommendations to the board.
So Ms. Hall, we usually do these in March, March, April, May timeframe. I get it, but I also know that when we hear from the individual departments, it usually, you know, everybody kind of pleads their case to try to get their allocations for the coming year. That said, do we anticipate that we're going to have another public hearing for the development that was foregone tonight?
That is, what happened tonight with the other application was they wanted to amend their proffers. Our attorney and their attorney had discussed some changes. The applicant submitted, signed proffers at 10:30 this morning, but they were not the proffers that were discussed. It's my understanding that that was an error, that they intended upon submitting the correct proffers, but because one of the property owners is out of town, they were unable to make the deadline of today. So it's my understanding they intend to pull the project until the October meeting.
So that's going to be a big meeting.
But there is no guarantee until I have that, so it's hard to say.
Chairman, is that, could we request like a special meeting for that specifically?
That's what I'm wondering from a, from a manageability standpoint, Heather. Do you think that's going to be a lot to put on? Because I don't want to have to rush through the CIP presentation, because these folks all need to have their time.
The CIP would be your first public hearing, so you would have that on your agenda first. You could do it that way. You can also direct staff that should the rezoning application come about in October, that we submit that for a special meeting.
What do y'all think?
I would just take the advertise again.
I know.
And then once we advertise, we get 11 o'clock, I mean, that CIP is only 10:30 from what I remember.
Yeah.
Not at early, 10:30, 11 o'clock, so taking a chance to not be any.
Finish it, yeah.
But we should respect the applicant order before we advertise. Or have a special session.
What I can do is communicate that with the applicant, and maybe he will let us know what his plan is, so that we can plan accordingly, that we would need that information by a particular date. If you were to hold a special meeting, what dates do you have in mind?
I don't, I mean, I think we're, I mean, I think we're just thinking about it at this point, but I guess, you know, to Mr. Myers' point, I wouldn't want to have to do a public hearing after the CIP presentation and have to make, I mean, we had a number of people in the parking lot tonight. I don't know how long those people would want to hang around through all of that to, to wait to speak either, you know, for or against. So it would just be a lot cleaner if we could have it as a standalone meeting, but I also don't want to monopolize anybody's time with an extra meeting. So I'd like to just get the input, some thoughts from the commissioners.
Like we did last, the last meeting, you know, the following week or something, something reasonable?
Okay. Yeah, and I was just going to point out, and we just had one basically back to back, August 11th and then August 19th, so within, you know, seven or eight days, I think that would be feasible.
If y'all are okay with it, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to mandate it on or direct it on anybody or come across that way. And I know, I know we love getting together.
Well, I, I, I'm very flexible, but I guess I would defer to Heather on what her schedule looks like and what she's got going on.
I wasn't exactly prepared for a special meeting. Typically, I would get the, the boards, as well as now the schools' calendar together beforehand, but the board meets on the first and third, we meet on the second, which is the day after a holiday as well. We could meet probably on a Thursday the following week or the same week, but I certainly wouldn't put it before your regularly scheduled meeting.
So we'd be looking at?
Or we also have the last week in October, is, should be pretty free traditionally.
So the 27th or?
At this point, I would hate to plan a special meeting.
Well, that's true. That's true, yeah.
Why don't we pick that as tentative? Heather thinks? I, I don't think that we could push them off for another meeting. And the only way that you could do that is if, if they get their necessary paperwork in time for the deadline, is if your time clock for your midnight meeting runs out, and that's not what you guys wanted to do. But to ask the applicant to wait another month, I'm not sure that that's legal.
So we could look at the 22nd or, or the 27th? That's a Thursday, the following Thursday, or the Tuesday, that fifth Tuesday, since it's?
In October?
Yes.
So our meeting, our regular meeting is October 13th, and that's when we would hold the CIP public hearing. So you could either do another meeting on a Thursday like we did the last time, or you could hold the 22nd of October, or the last week of October should be pretty open.
Right. So one of the, I mean, do you want to play it by ear, but us just kind of earmark that those dates could be a possibility and see what happens with the applicant?
I can certainly do that. We can always, you know, poll via email of what works closer to those dates.
Yeah, I'm good with that if y'all want.
Yeah, I mean, pencil something in, but until they, they submit an application.
Right, yeah, we don't know.
Because if they're not ready, then there's no reason to schedule a special meeting.
Correct. Is that okay with y'all? I mean, everybody, staff and Planning Commission, everybody?
I think we explain the situation, and if they want to go behind, we can go behind. It's just better to start working, rather than be here for 11 of anybody.
All right.
I did have a question.
Wait, 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 did we make a decision? Are we doing a special meeting or are we not doing a special meeting? I need a concession, a consensus on that at least.
So Mr. Myers, you wanted to ask him?
My thought is we explain where we are, and that you're going after a CIP, and that's risky. And if you want to go then, then that's the slot. If you want to wait, you can push off.
Cut off at midnight, though.
Yeah. I think it's going to be hard for us to make that call when we don't know if there's going to be three people or 53 people to speak that night.
I will tell you that tentatively, other than the battery storage amendment that we have later on in our agenda tonight, I don't have any other public hearings scheduled or planned to be that night.
Yeah, it's not like we really need to hear.
And also keep in mind, when we see this application again, we will not go over the application in its entirety, we will only go over its changes. So that should cut out a lot of time.
Okay, so I was going to bring this up actually in other business, but I'll ask it since we're talking about it. We're going to, we'll have to have another public hearing.
We do have to have another public hearing because it was remanded back to the Planning Commission.
So my, my question would be, and I'm hoping that we can get traction on this before the next meeting, so it's actually kind of opportune, is the last time we had a number of speakers who were not King George County residents, and the question I posed to the council at that point in time was, well, we'll let anybody speak. But I, I'd like to go back and revisit that, given that we've got new counsel, to find out whether it would be appropriate for a non-King George County resident to speak in favor or opposition of, of a development in a county for which they don't have a residence.
As I remember it, the vast majority of the folks who spoke were either employees of that action or associated with that action.
There were.
Yeah. So that's the other, yeah, so is, it is it appropriate, I guess the second part of that, would it be appropriate for anybody speaking in any way had to, to basically express or state whether they've got any sort of financial interest in the project? Is that, can we ask that or?
I'll relay that to Matt. He will also be at that meeting whenever that may be.
All right.
I did have a question on CIP, though.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
This spreadsheet, I see there's some new columns that are added. Right now, it has staff priority, PC priority, and I assume that's county administrator office?
Yes.
What are, what is the N? Is that new or necessary or?
That is a good question.
Okay.
But the county administrator will be here for the public hearing.
Okay.
Will he provide any kind of county level financial guidance about? I mean, here's, here's always been my issue with this exercise, is we go through, we look at the projects, we hear explanations, we rank them in order of importance, but there's no tieback to how much money is actually available from the county or what, does the county has a limit on what the budget could or should be? Any chance of getting any of that kind of input?
I can relay that back to the county administrator and maybe he can do a little opening speech as to what we're looking at. Is that, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, something, because it just feels like we're doing it from back.
Yes, sir.
I mean, all the projects have some validity to them and some value, but, you know, if there's a lot of extra money laying around to throw around at things, then great, but if there's not, it'd be nice to know that.
But even with $0, we're still required by law to review it?
Yes, so by law, the Planning Commission is only supposed to rate its importance without the consideration of the budget, but we can certainly receive information of where we are budget-wise.
And we rating, our rating is recommendation, correct?
Correct. So the Planning Commission makes a recommendation of as their importance, and the Board of Supervisors takes that into consideration when making their budget for the following year.
Alrighty, any additional discussion on CIP?
We do need a motion to schedule that public hearing.
Oh, okay, yes, could we request a motion to schedule the public hearing? For what date was that, Heather? I'm sorry, is it the 13th?
October 13th, 2020.
Request a motion to schedule a public hearing for the CIP FY21 for October 13th, 2020.
Time of it, what time will it be?
Oh, we'll do that one at 7:00. Yeah, that's going to be regular meeting, correct?
Regular meeting, unless you want to change your meeting times.
7:00 is good.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Anyone, anyone, anyone? Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Wait, wait, wait.
Mr. Myers?
Mr. Myers and Mr. Gabbro.
Mr. Gabbro.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor. Opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously, and next we are on to everyone's favorite topic, battery storage. I guess that's why Mr. Myers is here.
Mr. Myers certainly has an interest in our battery storage.
And we always have an interest in what Mr. Myers is interested in.
Go ahead.
All right, I will now be presenting a new zoning ordinance text amendment to permit the use of battery energy storage facility as a byright use in the I-Industrial zoning District. As you can see, the background for this presentation is the Beach Ridge Energy Storage Project in Rupert, West Virginia. Next slide, please. Battery energy storage facilities store electrical energy that can be used for short periods in time to reduce peak power demand and to lessen the likelihood of power outages. Currently, the King George County zoning ordinance does not permit this use in any zoning district. This proposed amendment would add battery storage facility as a byright use in the I-Industrial zoning district. This amendment would define the term and add supplemental regulations in Article 4 related to this use. Next slide, please. Here are just some pictures of energy storage facilities. The one on the bottom is an artist rendering of the GE reservoir units, and the picture on top is the Beacon battery storage system at the Beacon Solar Plant in California. Next slide. This next one is a 20-megawatt energy storage system located in McHenry, Illinois. Next slide. So battery storage energy facility will be defined as one or more batteries assembled together capable of storing energy in order to supply electrical energy at a future time, but not to include standalone 12-volt car battery or electrical motor vehicle or, or consumer products. This use will be added as a byright use in the industrial district with additional requirements in Article 4. Next slide. So these next will be the requirements in Article 4 first, public water must be available. The facility must not be visible from any adjacent street, use, or building. This is also a requirement that we put in for data centers. And access to the property for King George County Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services shall be provided in a manner acceptable to KGCFRES. Next slide. Site plans for battery energy Site plans for battery energy storage facilities will be accompanied by a decommissioning plan to be implemented upon abandonment or, and/or in conjunction with removal of the facility from the approved, or to be approved by the Department of Community Development. Next, the requirements for the decommissioning plan are outlined. Next slide. The decommissioning plan will include a narrative, bonding requirements, and a description of how the site will be restored once the use is discontinued. Next slide. Site plans for battery energy storage will also be accompanied by an emergency plan. This plan will include the procedure for emergencies and preventative measures. Next slide. The emergency plan will include procedures for different types of emergencies such as fires, explosions, and leaks. Next. This will also outline the procedures for drills and for training for first responders. Next slide. So at this time, staff is requesting the planning commission review the proposed amendments and provide feedback to staff. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Louis, you mentioned data centers. Does this help, or will this help maybe attract a data center, or will it?
Climate Development Tourism for the County. Mr. Chairman, absolutely. And as this is sort of connected to a Dominion Solar RFP, which is looking for energy storage without, throughout the Commonwealth, data centers are increasingly looking at how to increase their, essentially their reliability and backup to their operations, and instead of having big diesel generators, they're looking at energy storage or battery storage as a complement to that. And this is a less impact than obviously having a big diesel generator running, so.
Are there companies interested in building these in King George? I mean, that would be the impetus for this?
Yes, absolutely. So there is one that is directly, that is direct to the county, that is looking to submit a site plan. That project is confidential, I can't release, I'm under NDA.
Understood, yeah, yeah.
I'm sure you guys understand that process, and there are two others who are looking at battery storage. One is connected to a data center, but I have less information about that right now. But they are closely monitoring, or I should say, they are aware that we are, that we are bringing amendment to the ordinance to, to put this in. So this is just sort of my department, working with community development to be sort of proactive, let's get ahead of the curve, so that when they do get ready to either take down a property or move into the county, it's already there, right? We're already ready to go, and this is creating essentially a process where it's simple, certain, and fast, so.
Nice. And, and we just put it as a byright use, right, for industrial?
Do we know how much, like approximately how much industrial acreage the county actually has?
So I don't have an exact number on the top, off the top of my head. There is currently, the King George Industrial Park is 144 acres, all zoned industrial. There is 70 acres of that is currently available, there is 50 of that is currently optioned out to a company who is looking at a certain plan like this. There is also acreage on the Claydale site that's zoned industrial, however, I think that's approximately 30 to 40 acres, I would roughly guess the Claydale property is. And then the other industrial properties are near the gravel and sand pits in the county, and then there are some other ones, some smaller ones towards the front of the county. I think the King George Truck, Trucking Station up there is zoned industrial, but that's about it. So anything else, I would say will probably need to be rezoned. I'm very mindful of where these areas are that could be potentially rezoned, and I worked at with them ahead of time, and also work with community development ahead of a ti, ahead of time. So I let them know, before they even say they want to take down this property, we check to see if it's in a primary settlement area, who's around it, has it been zoned industrial in the past, has it not? We just, really what this is also is for me to, one, introduce myself to you guys, also let you know that I work closely with Heather, and we essentially plan out these things way ahead of time before a business makes a decision. So it's just sort of us doing our due diligence before it even gets to you guys.
So the, the gravel and sand extraction, those, that's actually agricultural land, and that's allowed by special exception permit?
Some.
For all of them, or some of them?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I couldn't hear.
So, so the sand and gravel extraction, that it's zoned industrial or it's agricultural with a special exception permit?
Each one of those applications are a little different, but most of them are under special exception with that decommissioning plan. Some of them only have a small portion of industrial where the actual operation of the changing of materials was being done, not the mining, and a lot of those, the special exception required them to come back once they closed that mine and rezone it back to the agricultural or less dense zoning district. But there were some that don't have that clause.
Okay, so battery storage could not actually go on that property after they did the remediation and all that, without a rezoning, right?
Unofficially, yes, that, that's my thought process. Majority of this will go within the industrial park and possibly the 301 property of Claydale. Also, Nick, did you want to talk a little bit about what your, when someone purchases a property in the industrial park, would you guys go through with your board? Isn't there a review from your board of who buys?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. So before they purchase any property, on the economic development side of it, one, the EDA has to approve it. We also have to look into, depending on what the project is and how we're incentivizing it, a lot of times we look at their financials before we make any decisions. There's also has to be an LOI, of course, a letter of intent, or some sort of agreement that they are going to locate to the county before we start making any changes to anything, right? You know, this one here, there are, obviously there are new prospects, and then there are existing industry, existing, existing companies, I should say, in the county that are looking at utilizing this. So there are two different ways that we have to approach how we handle it.
From a, from an attractiveness standpoint, are we, as a county, I mean, do we have enough provisions in place to try to lure some of these companies down? I know that, there's an article came out, I think last week, I was listening to it on TOP, that Northern Virginia is like exponentially ahead of everywhere else in the world as far as data centers, and I'm wondering.
Yeah, absolutely. So to speak on that, so one of the things that we're seeing, not just as a county, but as a region, the cost of doing business in Northern Virginia is increasing, especially for data center companies. So the last time, the last acquisition that I actually paid attention to was in Loudon County, and it was over a million dollars per acre. Now, that's on data center alley, right? That's where I would say 70 to 80% of the internet traffic in America, or it might even be the world, flows through. So they're looking further south. Where they want to be is essentially as close to Loudon as possible, but with the cheapest, with, with the cheapest land. Because for them, it's all about latency and infrastructure. Infrastructure and power, basically. They want to be next to the Dominion grid, they want to be close to a substation, and they want to be close to the broadband as possible. The companies that would be interested in King George are going to be large providers, they're going to be Google, they're going to be Microsoft, they're going to be Apple, they're going to be Facebook, because they have the finances to run their broadband from anywhere to wherever it needs to go to. Where we have a significant advantage is in our property, is in our land costs and our taxes. So we have very low taxes and our property costs are very low as well. And we have a Dominion, we have a Dominion lines going throughout the county on 301 and on 3. So we're very competitive from a property cost and, and power cost. However, we have to be, we have to do what we can to attract them, or to lure them away from I-95, right? Because that's where they see the potential at. It's easy to get to the infrastructure, the land cost is, it's high, but it's not as high as Loudon County. So we have to do what we can to be even more attractive.
Well, and we have a power plant, too.
Yeah, well, that's, that's sort of, because we do have a decommissioning power plant, our county has gotten a lot of attention because of that, because of where Birchwood is located, their connection into the grid, and they're a power provider, so they know how to develop energy. And that makes them attractive not only for energy development, but also for data centers. We're in a good place right now, we just need to win one. And, you know, an action like this, and really working well with Heather, really goes a long way, so.
I have full faith and confidence in Nick Miner.
Appreciate it. I need all the support I can get. So this, so I tried to look up before I came here tonight what one of these would cause, but one of the interesting things about data centers and energy storage is that batteries run, you know, the life of a battery essentially runs out, so they have to be replaced. So that means more personal property taxes for the county. So old one comes out, new one comes in, that gets re-taxed. Same thing with data center servers. Data center servers have their lives, they have a short life term, so new ones come in, that's re, that's new taxable money. So this is why, another reason why these are very attractive. Data centers, low impact, not a lot of, not a lot of employees, a lot of capital investment. Energy storage, same thing, low impact, maybe one employee that monitors it, but the capital investment is high. So for rural counties, if you have the infrastructure to pull a data center to your county, or if you have the infrastructure, infrastructure to pull the energy storage, energy storage to it, you should, because it's not a big demand on schools, it's not a big demand on roads. All you need is the infrastructure, and you just need to have the land cost, you need to just be competitive. So in our ordinances, you know, the, the things that we do, the small details is how we win these projects. It's not necessarily how we go about, you know, marketing ourselves or pushing ourselves out there, it's just being smart, it's thinking ahead of, you know, being ahead of the game, and that's really how you win, especially right now when land costs everywhere else is skyrocketing, so.
Outside of Loudon County, how many other counties in the state?
So they're in Prince William County, they're in Falkir County, Culpeper has one, they're also looking out, I remember at some point they were looking at Nelson County. So they're trying to find a way to get out of Loudon because the cost is substantial, or Northern Virginia in general. And that's where Fredericksburg, the Fredericksburg region as a whole, you guys, I'm not sure how many of you guys were on the planning commission when they passed the data center ordinance, but as a whole, the whole region actually put it in, they lowered it, I believe they lowered their tax rates, or, I'm sorry, in some cases we raised them to match that at Prince William, and we also changed, added it to our ordinance and sort of changed the way that we depreciate their equipment to be more competitive. So they're, they're essentially all over Northern Virginia, and they're starting to make their way further down. There was a big announcement in Rico County for Facebook, and then they're also looking now in Virginia Beach because they're crossing. But we stand, as the Fredericksburg area, Fredericksburg region, and King George is included in that, we stand in a pretty good spot right now because we're the next growth area. So there's a lot of broadband on 95, but there's also a lot of broadband on 301, and there's plenty of it going through Route 3. So we have a chance, it's just being smart.
If I remember, Gary, the statistic in that article, it was like approximately 100 data centers in the state, and 80 of them went, were in Loudon, and the rest were kind of peppered around.
Yeah.
The other places that, that Nick mentioned, but yeah, Loudon's like the hot spot for it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Data centers.
Not just in Amer, not just in America, but in the world, so.
Yeah, because it was, the next in line, I think it was Dallas, and then it was London.
Oregon, I think.
If I can ask you, now these might be disparate variables, but, so I know they, they consume a lot of energy.
Yep.
So would that have any impact on energy prices, I guess I should say, or that have any negative impact on energy costs for citizens?
I do not think so. Actually, I think it lowers it. So the more industrial users you have, the lower it should be for the residents. Now, don't quote me, I could be absolute, I could be absolutely wrong about that, but I do know that as far as industrial costs for energy, Dominion or Virginia, I should say, is probably one of the lowest, which is what makes Virginia such a good data center attracter. So that should lower the cost for your residential. But do not quote me on that. If you want more information, I'd be more than happy to reach out to Dominion and see how we compare to other locations.
I would just suspect that question would come up if we ever get to the, that, you know, juncture.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah. I can, I can, I can research that for you guys and send it to you all.
Nick, I have a question for you.
Sure.
As, as I'm looking through the slides, at the actual picture, it has a solar field. We recently had an influx of solar fields being built in a neighboring county here in Montrose, I think Spotsylvania's got, building some, and they're steadily building them. Is that something that we would be in conjunction with the batteries, or how?
So, yes, so the, the, one of the reasons why we're looking at this ordinance change is because it is connected to the Dominion RFP, which is massive. So they're looking for 250 megawatts of energy storage, and so, and that is in conjunction with solar storage. So what you might see is maybe a 100-acre solar farm, not, I'm not sure if it's going to land in our county or not, I'm just giving as an example, maybe 100-acre solar farm, and then they might have five to 10 megawatts of energy storage next to it, something like, something to that effect, right? You know, but a data center is different, they may have, you know, a huge, I mean, you might be looking at a campus with a million square feet of data center space, and then for each campus, there may be two or three backup energy storage things connected to it. But those two do go hand in hand, and also what I'm seeing is that larger industries, big manufacturers, obviously data centers, want to be connected to solar energy. So what they want is almost that they're developing their own, right? They're creating their own energy, so they really don't have to, obviously they'll be connected to a Dominion line or some power provider, but they also have their own backup. So there's a self-sustaining operation essentially. They just have to measure out how much, what acreage they need in order to keep their operation going, and then they'll have the backup energy storage with it, and then it'll be tapped into the grid.
Thank you.
It's sort of what I'm seeing, so.
Cool.
Are, are you aware of any information out there regarding the impact on emergency services or fire and rescue that a battery storage facility might have? I mean, it's, battery fires is different than a house fire, chemicals, hazardous waste, would they need new equipment, different training?
Right. I'm not familiar. The first, I believe the first energy storage project in North America was in 2015, so there may be some data on it, but this is a relatively new industry for everybody right now, so.
I suspect there would be an impact, and so how would we?
How do you come back?
Through the ordinance.
Mr. Cola, we can certainly check with our fire and rescue and make sure that anything that they need is, is provided in our, our text amendment.
Okay, great.
You'd mentioned several counties that already have, they already have the battery storage in place?
They already have the data center. So the battery storage, I'm going to say is pretty new for everybody in Virginia. So Virginia's pretty slow on solar projects, and I believe the energy storage, I mean, Dominion drives the energy industry in Virginia, and this is the largest, I would say, or even the first time I've heard of them actually going after energy storage. There are various energy storage projects that are connected to data centers. There's a lot of them, experimental ones, but the most reliable, it seems like, is lithium ion, which is where they're, which is where I see the industry sort of going. It may, it may completely go somewhere else where it's, I mean, I've seen stuff with fuel cells, and there's all kinds of stuff that the Department of Energy is researching. But energy storage is pretty brand new to the Commonwealth. The Spotsylvania County just announced one with REC, I believe a very small pilot, you know, and they may be looking at something similar to what Dominion's trying to do, where REC may look for energy storage as well, so. Hope that answers your question.
So that was data centers, is what you were saying about counties?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we're just, we don't have any actions on this tonight, do we?
What staff wanted was to present the idea, get any feedback or things that we may not have thought about in the proposed text amendment. If, if there is nothing other than the fire and rescue question, we can certainly move to hold a public hearing at this time if you feel that this is ready to move forward.
Sure, I mean, does anybody else have any other thoughts or concerns or questions or comments, or we, do we feel like we can move forward with a motion for a public hearing? Okay.
My question for safety and identify with what industrial ordinance would automatically call it.
Okay, we'll get that ready, please.
Good point. Cool. When would, going back to this other point earlier, Heather, when do you think we would actually have that public hearing? That's sort of our, yeah, October 13th, right after CIP and just before something else.
We can tentatively put it on October, but if we have a heavy agenda, we can certainly look at November.
Okay.
As long as you give me a motion to hold a public hearing, we can schedule it at how it fits in our agenda.
So we are looking for a motion to hold a public hearing on battery storage?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we schedule a public hearing for the battery energy storage facility, uh, text amendment, zoning ordinance text amendment.
Motion has been made.
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Fantastic. Now, we are on to, thank you, Mr. Miner, by the way, I appreciate it. On to the director's report. We'll turn that over to the director.
Well, as you are aware, we had a King George Villages pull out this afternoon at about 2:00 PM. So they were removed from tonight's agenda. I, I think we've already discussed that. The only other item I had for you is Hoppy, our preliminary plat is scheduled for a public hearing with the board on September 15th, which is next week.
Excellent. We shall then.
Other than this may be Brad Hudson's very last meeting.
No way. He's coming back as an emeritus, uh, position, I believe. Hold on, it's just September. I thought you weren't bugging out until November.
Why would you do such a thing?
Man.
It's stunning, Brad.
Congratulations, sir. We need to have a fiesta of some sort. Social distancing, of course, yes. Awesome, well, congratulations. That, we will move to other business. Is there any other business?
I did have a question, but it might just be old business. What is the status of the solar farm? It's not being built, is it?
The last update I had, um, was about this time last year where they asked for an extension of the one-year requirement for their preliminary plan approval. It's my understanding they are caught up in the red tape with Dominion.
So what, what is the next milestone?
I want to say they usually come back in December and ask for that extension. Whether or not they will do that, I, I do not know. I've not heard from them.
Okay, thank you.
On approval, they had promised to donate panels to the STEM program. Do you know if they ever did that?
To my knowledge, they have not.
What, there was a, what was it?
They said they were going to donate panels to the STEM program for the schools.
Was there actually a large sum of money?
Was that a condition of their, their permit or just something that they promised during public hearing? I wasn't, I was having a baby at that time, so I was a little busy.
Yeah, I thought they were going to make a donation to like a garden and. That's right, that's, that's right, that's right. Well, thankfully that era has passed. Alrighty, any other business? Other, other business? We're almost there, we're almost there. All right, with that, with that, we're going to look to the number 12 on our agenda tonight and we are going to ask for a motion to adjourn, ah, we've got a motion! It's been made, seconded, and thirded. All in favor?